Well, good evening, everybody. Welcome. Call this meeting to order and start with rule call. Suzanne?
Thank you. Mayor Levy?
Here.
Mayor Lieutenant Carr?
Here.
Councilmember Key?
Hello.
Member LaBarre?
Here.
Councilmember Sawyer?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Suzanne. If you will all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Christie, number 11 is really loud.
Okay, thank you. Okay, agenda item 3A and Darren Tanjman.
Can you hear me?
Good. All right. Tonight, we're, as we do about every quarter, actually every few times a year, we introduce the new cohort of Veteran Local Government, Veteran Fellows, or VLGMF, Veterans Local Government Management Fellows. And we have three here tonight that I'd like to introduce to City Council in our community that have been doing projects and will continue to do projects for us for the next, maybe a week and up to 16 weeks or so, and maybe even further. So, the first one I want to bring up is Chris Kinsell. If you could, come on up. Can you hear me? All right. So, Chris is working for the city attorney. Chris has goals and objectives to become, potentially become, an attorney in a municipal organization sometime in the future. He's still learning whether or not that's his long-term goals because I know he's looking at other things as well in terms of, he obviously has to go to school, but he's learning some great things with Jason in the city attorney's office and doing work with Jason in terms of reviewing legal documents and doing some great things with us. So, I just want to have Chris make a comment. What is that your goals and objectives are with the Veterans Local Government Fellowship? And just give a little bit of a background of what you've done in the military.
Hey, everybody. I'm Chris Kinsell, like Darren said, and I'd just like to thank Darren and Jason for giving me the opportunity. But yeah, I've been in the Army five years, working with communications, customer service type stuff, and I really just wanted to gain the experience. I met Darren at a workshop through the Soldier for Life Transition Program, and through one conversation, he invited me out here, and he really helped me make this step. So, without him, I might not even be here talking in front of all you guys, but yeah, Jason has taught me a lot. Just, I'm getting experience with Lexus Nexus Program for doing like, studying for law and stuff like that and just doing legal research. So, I sat in on federal court here. I've been doing a lot, so it's already met my expectations and I'm still going. I've been here for about two months now.
Thank you, Chris. Appreciate it. Appreciate it. Next one is to be Jose Ayau? Jose? Jose is, he's on a shorter duration of a fellowship. He wanted to get some experience both with the city of Woodland Park and the city of Colorado Springs. So, he's been working with us for the first six weeks, working with us to help refine our fleet rotation plan, because his background, and then he'll talk about that in a second, what he's done, but he's a fleet maintenance warrant officer. He's been doing that for well over 20 years, so he's got a lot of experience in that arena. So, same thing to you. Give a little bit back of your background, Jose, and what you expect to learn and gain from the program.
Well, Mr. Darren says, my background is on the maintenance side. So, I worked on the maintenance fleet for 20-plus years in the Army. So, pretty soon, I should be retiring in next October. So, what I want to gain from the ICMA Local Government Endurement is the experience through Mr. Darren, Mr. Cape, Mr. Ben. Right now, they've been helping me out, teaching me some of their expertise, and we're sharing my expertise to them. So, that's what I got so far.
Thanks, Jose. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Chief.
And now, we have Darren Trailer. Darren Trailer has been shadowing in our police department for the last about two months or so, and is looking like, he wants to get in law enforcement. That's his intent. So, I'll let him kind of talk about what his goals and objectives are and a little bit about his background as well.
Good morning, everyone. Like Darren said, my name is Darren Trailer. I've been in the Army for about six years. About to get out, I was a 15-roomer, which is a helicopter mechanic. I'm going to do a little career change. So, I'm going to be in the, I want to be a police officer. We have an amazing city in Woodland Park and an amazing chief as well. So, hopefully, I could join that as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Darren. Darren is going to be attending the post academy in August, so looking forward to seeing him graduate from that as well. But between now and then, he's going to be helping the city with the PD and also helping us with developing our Continuum Operations Plan for the city. So, thanks, Darren. That is, if you want to bring him off, that's fine, too. If you can, if you could all come up real quick and get a photo.
If you want to.
Yeah, Jose's actually going to, he'll be leaving in about a week, and so he won't have the time to kind of say goodbye to Jose. So, it'd be a good time for right now.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, sometimes the mayor actually initiates these things, but I appreciate Noel. First, I want to thank this Darren for everything he does for veterans and how he kind of brings them back in the fold and gets them ready for the next aspect of their life. You can see they're very appreciative, and this program that Darren has helped enacted and kind of started is crucial and key to our city. They give us great expertise. They help us along the way, and we help them. And so, it's a win-win. I couldn't be prouder of Darren and all these guys. All four of them are obviously veterans, so first and foremost, I want to thank you for your service to our country. And then Darren, start with- These pins are their mayor's pins, and they're given to folks that go above and beyond for our community. And so, that's why you'll be receiving these today. So, on behalf of City Council, on behalf of everyone in the room, on behalf of our community, Darren, I'll start with you. Thanks very much. Best of luck to you. They said that you shadowed somebody. You cast a pretty big shadow yourself. Chris, thanks very much. Thanks for all your help. Really appreciate it. And Jose, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Really appreciate it, chief. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you to everybody. Okay, Darren, we'll move on with, you're going to introduce-
I will.
Emily?
Okay. So, tonight, I'm here to introduce our new finance director and to bring her up to get her appointment to treasurer. So, tonight, introduce Emily Katzempelis. Remember that name. It's really difficult to pronounce and spell, so Emily is coming from over 10 years in local government, from the cities of Salida and Buena Vista, and has done an incredible job there. She has a great reputation. I've heard at the CML conference, had multiple people come up to me and congratulate the city and myself on hiring her into the finance director position. They all had great things to say about her, and so I think we're really lucky to have Emily here, and that's not putting a whole lot of pressure on her, but you know, and I've not heard a single, a single bad thing about Emily. I've only heard the great things that she's done, and I anticipate she's going to do great things for the city. So, I'd like to bring Emily up, and if you could, just kind of introduce yourself and your background, and we'll get to the appointment process.
Sure. Thank you, Darren. So, hi, Mayor and Council. Thank you so much for this opportunity. I'm really excited to start with the city of Woodland Park as your new finance director and treasurer. Let's see. Background, I am a Colorado native, born and raised in Fort Collins, Colorado, and I attended CU Boulder for my undergrad, studied political science and international affairs. And I actually studied abroad in Taipei, Taiwan, in college. I studied Mandarin Chinese. And I worked, my first job after college was working for an Asian travel company in Boulder. And from there, kind of make a long story short, I ended up enrolling in the Masters of Public Administration Program at CU Denver. So, I have my MPA from CU Denver, and from there, went on to work for the city of Salida and then the town of Buena Vista, just up the road from here. So, and this is my next step, and I'm so excited to be here. So, thank you for this honor.
Okay, we're going to swear you in, Emily.
With pleasure. Thanks, Emily.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Suzanne, we're going to move on to additions, deletions, or corrections, and I think you have a change.
Thank you, Mayor Levy. Thank you. This evening, we will be removing, deleting on the agenda, item number 11D2, which is on the back page, and it's the totally financial report. We just need Emily's grant span, and then we need a little bit more time for that, so we'll pull that off the agenda.
Thank you. Council, anything else? Okay. If not, will you move on to the consent calendar? And Suzanne?
Thank you, Mayor Levy. This evening, we have one item on the consent agenda, and that is for the minutes from June 6, 2018, Council.
Council. Questions? If not, we'll look for a motion.
I'll move to approve the consent calendar as presented. Second.
Thank you, Suzanne.
Carr?
Yes.
Please?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yep.
LaBarre?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
From here?
Thank you, Suzanne. Okay, we're going to move on to public comment. I'm going to start with Brian Potts. Brian's with J. Lewis, the Joint Land Use Study, and been doing a tremendous job, and he's got an update for us. So, thanks for being here, Brian.
Thank you very much. Is this coming through? Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Brian Potts. I'm with the Pike's Peak Area Council Governments. I'm the Joint Land Use Study Program Manager. I have been here in the past, keep hearing the feedback, sorry. I've been here in the past to talk about the study that we completed at the end of last year, and we published, published that online back in March. We did receive a follow-up grant from the Department of Defense Office of Economic Adjustment on March 27th, and with that, that means that it's an implementation grant. And with that, that means we were granted about 18 months to conduct, again, facilitation and support of local, regional governments and facilitation with the military to help take some of the recommendations within the study and move forward on those that had been recommended by the previous iterations of the committees. With that, obviously, there's an importance to continue to work with the military. As evidenced with this presentation tonight, there's a lot of ties in the community with the military. It's a big part of the regional economy, and with that, the ongoing goal that we have is continue to help with community stakeholders and the military to work together, whether are good opportunities for partnership on whatever that may be, community and military interface. The implementation grant scope, there were eight tasks that were included in this grant. There's an opportunity we could do a scope adjustment in the near future after we get our first committee started up. The, you'll see in task one, and that's the main reason why I'm here tonight, is stand-up of the Joint Land Use Study Implementation Policy Committee. So, with the last study, the goals of those policy and technical committees was to create a report and help guide the study process. With that having been complete and having funding for implementation, now it shifts a bit. So, we recognize it's not going to be the same role of the committee, the exact same people, maybe at the table. To give you a sense of where we're going with that committee and what's going to be guiding it, we've, I've laid out kind of some of the general actions we'll be doing. Right now, we're in the, we had approval two weeks ago at the last Pike's Peak Area Council Governments Board of Directors Meeting to stand up this committee and identify what entities should be involved. And unlike the last process, it was identified that there should be more inclusion. There should be more inclusion of all 16-member governments of the board, which includes city of Woodland Park, city of Victor, Cobble Creek, some of our other smaller communities, just to see if there's any other opportunities that, for partnership. So, with that, we're in the process of contacting and going around to all the entities and helping them understand where we're at and where we're going. So, with that, next, some of the items that are going to be occurring will be, we're going to be identifying data we can use for regional energy and radar site mapping. Principle behind this is that in a case, an instance with Fort Drum in New York, you had an instance where a wind farm went in a location really close to a weather radar and suddenly have a permanent rain shadow in this one location where it always looks like it's raining in this triangle. With seeing that, we thought, well, just in case, we better try and see if there's any potential for those conflicts in our region, so we're going to see what we can do with identifying where radar sites are and where there might be some instances of conflict. Obviously, that may not be as much of an issue up here, but it's just something we wanted to note. With that, also, we're going to be working on some real estate disclosure language, just some model language with some of the real estate community for those that may be living close to areas where there is training operations, so we're exploring that option. And then also, what we see is something that could potentially be beneficial up here, which I'd mentioned in the past, is working with some of the communication officials at the towns and communities and with the military to identify what kind of information does the public want to know about, about military operations, seeing how we can put that in both a web and a print format, so that that way people can get an education or some extra information on why are they doing flight training? Where are some of these flights coming from? A lot of times, for example, I think I've mentioned in the past, with jets flying through the region, most of those jets are not based at all in our region. They're from Buckley or from other parts, other bases in neighboring states. Even some of the helicopter training that occurs up in this area is sometimes occurring with helicopters that are from other bases, but they're using the terrain. So, that's where we can figure out some ways to help with that and also provide information on where can someone go if they're seeing an issue. So, that's one of the things we will partner with you guys on. With that, some of the key findings, obviously, communication coordination is going to continue to be important. Wildfire in the future, we know that there were joint use of resources where the military can part with communities to help with firefighting. We hope to continue to figure out how we can support those efforts, which also gets down to the capacity of airports down along the front range in terms of refueling tankers using that to fight fires up here. And then Fort Carson, as we know, will continue to be training in the area up here, so we want to help with any way we can support with that. So, I think I went through some of those already, got ahead of myself. The key thing while we're here is that since Woodland Park is going to have a seat on this committee, we just want to give you an introduction to that and just in terms of things to think about when you think about who might be a good representative to send, it doesn't have to necessarily be someone on the council. It can be a management position within the administration. What we're seeing from, say, Fort Carson, their Department of Public Works Director at Fort Carson is the one being sent. El Paso County is looking at sending someone from their Department of Planning Services and Development Services. So, that kind of gives you a sense, this is the committee that's supposed to help with looking at action, getting things done, and so that's what we're asking for, is that the time commitment, five to six quarterly meetings that'll occur over the next 18 months at most. First meeting, we anticipate for July 25th. And so, if you have any questions going forward, please direct them to me. I believe Darren and, well, you probably have my contact information. If anything, it's here on this last slide, and if you're trying to figure out who's a good recommendation, let us know. If you need any more details, let us know. But at this point, ask any questions that you have, and I'd be happy to answer.
Excuse me, Ryan, I've got a question for us. How are we going to manage this? Are we going to select?
I mean, it could either, like you said, like Brian said, it could be either an elected official or a manager. Probably a member, are you, do you feel like a member of PPACG is like aligning it with someone who's already on PPACG? Is it good practice?
It doesn't have to be, but it could be something where if, I mean, that is entirely up to you. We're saying that whatever you feel is going to be best representative on military issues and looking at if there's something with, trying to get in touch with the communication person here to help with development of the brochures, if it's something that has to do with land use. So, I mean, there's also opportunities, this committee may actually create another working group if necessary. So, but what we see, as I said, we seem to be seeing people not from the elected coming through, but more from the higher-level administration from the entities. That seems to be what is getting put forward for this.
And you're saying the duration is 18 months?
Yes.
Okay. And I have, I have served on, as Brian knows, I served on the technical committee for JALIS at a different capacity for about, about two years, I guess-
Yeah.
-before this, but the city council can choose to send either someone from the staff or select someone from the elected body. I know Carol has a background, she has a military background, but Carol, I know you, you're only going to be here for, plan only to be here for about another, I don't know if you have any interest or not.
I certainly do it in my capacity as a city council member, but I could also continue to do it after my term is over next year. For consideration, you make your decision. But I did have another question. Has the committee worked with any of the team that's determining who's, which installation is going to host the new air, or the US Space Command?
No, because this committee has not been stood up yet, there is no committee that's been working on it, but we are aware there's a lot of other people throughout the state working on the Space Command location, including a lot, of course, as now it's in the hands, as I understand it, at the higher levels of the Air Force, and Congress is working through what that would look like. I know that there's a confirmation of the head of Space Command, General Raymond, who is currently at Peterson. I understand that process is either recently completed or close to completion. I haven't followed up on that recently, but we understand that we do have a very good chance of Space Command coming to one of the bases, one of the installations in the state.
Having said that, though, Darren, if you would like to consider me for the committee, I'd be glad to serve until my term is over and I can continue afterwards.
I think that's, I've seen that happen where, and then you just come back and you report to the city council on the monthly meetings. I've seen that happen, done successfully. When is the deadline for us to get you the answer?
We would like to get something by July 12th.
Okay.
So, you still have some time. We figured that's about, you know, I'm sorry, July 10th. It's about two weeks ahead of time, and that way, we're able to get you meeting materials as we're sending them out and follow up with that individual representative if there's any additional information you need or guidance.
City Council wants to make a motion.
You know what? I couldn't agree more. I don't think we need to, I mean, everyone's shaking their head, Carol. We'd appreciate it.
That's great.
She couldn't be a better candidate, so there you go. We've got one.
Okay. We'll send you that officially.
In my honor.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Perfect. Thanks, Brian. Thank you very much for being here. Any other questions of Brian before he leaves? Thanks for all your work, Brian.
Thank you.
You bet. Okay, before we move on, Darren, you have an introduction?
We have kind of, we have another introduction, so I apologize we didn't get this done earlier, but it wasn't placed on. John, if you could come up, I appreciate it. John Moeller. John is our CP29, or what it's called, Army Installation Management Command Fellow from Fort Meade, Maryland. John has been, got here on Monday and has been shadowing different departments. He went to NORAD, NORAD North Com with me and the city manager from Fountain and their fellow from Fort Bragg, North Carolina, and the fellow from Honolulu Installation, I guess Hawaii Installation Management Command. And so, we've been, he's been moving between department to department, doing information exchange and learning and asking questions. It's been, it's been a good experience so far, and we're excited to have him until the end of the week. I just, John, if you could kind of, what are you planning on, what do you want to get from this fellowship?
The Army sent me here to come back with some best practices, which to the Army means find ways to save money and do things better, cheaper, more efficiently, and in the business. I've had so far, I've already collected several what I consider best practices, and I'm going to go back and try to convince the Army that they ought to adopt. So, I appreciate Darren, I appreciate the invitation and appreciate the time of your staff, because I know you're busy, so thanks for having me sponsor me.
Thanks, John. This is, we're one of 16 cities in the nation that have, are participating in this fellowship program, so it's pretty special to us to have, to have John here and being able to have him engage with our staff. He's also meeting with the chamber, he's meeting with the fire district and the school district this week to get engaged on those levels as well and meet with their senior leadership. So, it's all, I think it's going to be, the fellowship will be well-served for John and be able to take back some great information. The fellowship's great. Got a chance to go to the Pentagon about a month ago and kind of scope out this fellowship, and this is something that's going to continue on for years to come, where there's, the ICMA International City County Management Association is trying to find the nexus between installation managements or military cities and our municipalities throughout the country so we can both find best practices from each other. Some of the other things that are happening in the nation are what's called IXAs, Installation, Intergovernmental Agreement between military installations and municipalities to find efficiencies. For instance, when utilities can serve both communities, they will establish these agreements so that those utilities can serve either the installation or the municipality at a cheaper rate and efficiency for both communities. So, those are the types of things that you're seeing right now. Right now, the city of Fountain is developing one of those IXAs with Fort Carson, so it's a great program. That's all I have to say about the program. So, thanks for welcoming John to the city of Woodland Park.
Thanks, John. Darren, what is his last name again, please?
Moeller? M-O-E-L-L-R.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to public comment. I think there's some of you that want to comment tonight on the deer population and that conversation. So, what I think I'm going to do is, we're going to have a work session right after this meeting. This meeting will not last long tonight. So, for those people that have signed up and want to talk about deer population and how we are going to move forward, I would ask you to hold your comment until we have our work session, which, like I said, will follow this meeting immediately. And then, council, we're going to go into executive session after that for a whole different matter. So, we're going to change that agenda around a little bit, and so if I call your name now and you've signed up and you want to speak relative to the deer population, I'll kindly ask you just to hold your comments until later, and trust me, you'll have all the time in the world. And trust me, you'll have all the time in the world or you'll have, you'll have two or three minutes to, to come forward. Sorry, Claudia, I didn't mean that. Okay, so I'm going to start with my list. Francis Sennell, is that correct? Excuse me, young lady, if you want to comment, you're going to have to come up to the podium.
The reason that I'm here and the reason that several other people are here is because of what happened over the weekend and on Monday.
Ma'am, did you state your name and address?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Francis Sennell. I live on Columbine Village Drive and I've lived in Woodland Park for just about nine years now. Our issue is with violation of the Colorado Sunshine laws. And as I was listening to all of the positive things that were going on this evening, I don't really want to be a Debbie Downer about this, but I think it's got to be addressed. I've heard some things about this city, mostly in question form, like are these people, is there nepotism, are things going on that are clandestine? Why does everyone think that, at least in the majority of city government, that when we place a call to you folks, we're pests and we're bothersome? And we're concerned. For example, the, the Woodland Village Trailer Park that is owned by Pete Labarre, he turned off the water for seven hours a day, starting I believe on June 2nd. We've been trying to contact him, a bunch of concerned citizens, because this is just wrong. And what that has-
Excuse me, young lady, I'm going to ask you to stop for just a second. Are you and the others all going to speak about the trailer park, the Woodland Park Trailer Park? Is that what you're really here for?
I don't know.
Okay, tell me what you're really here, is that, you said for example, because we have some information-
Sir, if you could address me respectfully, I will certainly reciprocate that. I will not be condescended to. But here's the issue. I made four calls to City Hall on Monday, nobody called me back. I left four, three messages for Mr. Tangeman and I left a couple of messages for Kip Waters. Nobody bothered to call me back. I found out later that there was a meeting that occurred with a lot of you and a lot of employees of Woodland, of the city of Woodland Park that lasted for hours that involved Mr. Labarre being called in. And because, as most of you hopefully know, we embarked on a charitable drive over the weekend when we found out that the water that the people in that trailer park by the Walmart was drinking was polluted and nobody wanted to do anything about it. I left a message for Chief Miles. They had already determined it was a landlord-tenant issue. No, actually, sir, the issue is that it violates the law in Colorado in terms of habitability and, and safety for the tenants. Those laws exist to be enforced because to not enforce those is to be permitting crime. Things have to change and here's my question, I'll sit down after this. I want to know, and a lot of people want to know exactly what happened in that meeting, which I understood took about three hours. Because we should have been invited or at least notified and we weren't. And it's our business and it's our right.
Thank you very much. Well, we, we can all address it. Jason, you want to start?
First of all, that, the meeting, yes, we did hear them, we got the message and we did reach out. You had to have a quorum to violate Sunshine law. I invited the mayor, the mayor, mayor and I invited Mr. Labarre and the private owner of, of the mobile home park to come and discuss the issue because we wanted to get to the bottom of it and find out what the timeline was for resolution. I do take this very seriously. And so we sat down with him and we, we got that from him and we published it that day in social media, the, what the result of that meeting was. And we've continued to stay in contact with him every day. Tonight, Kip Wiley has a report on where they are, the mobile home park, on the third, on the third day of this back and forth with the property owner. So I just want to assure the community that we did hear you and we are, we are working to resolve the issue. It is a private property. We, we, I won't get, we can talk about in terms of what are legal responsibilities or our ability to compel a private property owner to fix their property. That is, that is something that we won't comment on. It's not our, it's not our purview. I don't know if Jason, you want to, want to tap or jump in on that, but I can have Kip just bring us up to speed on where, where we are today with that issue, if you can, Kip.
Absolutely. So we did meet with property owner on Monday. Tuesday around 9:30, we were, we came on site to assist the property owner as he was isolating his distribution system. It's the private properties distribution system, not the city's distribution system. He was able to isolate the majority of the distribution system and we determined that there was a point, or a 1.8 gallon per minute leak. Because in his, his water usage has been spiraling out of control. After the water system was isolated and that small leak was detected, the owner contacted a leak detection company to survey the distribution system and they found no leak within the distribution system. However, they did identify certain residences with high volume passing through their lines. They have also contacted those residences to fix the usage within their lines because where they were shut down only led to determine that the usage, the high usage was coming from within the units. The property owner has left the water on as of today and is working with those residents to repair the systems within those units. And they, and they have, they've given those unit owners seven days to comply. And then also in regards to the boil order, it's my understanding, since we have determined that there is no leak or a very small leak within the distribution system, that the water is not polluted. However, CDPHD will require the property owner to collect total chloroform samples to be submitted to verify that. And those are apparently being submitted today or tomorrow.
Young lady, you're out of order, I'm sorry.
The meeting, we discussed on how we could attempt to help fix the issues.
Thanks, Kip.
That's what we, that's what we discussed in the meeting is how to move forward and what I laid out here is what we, what we discussed.
So just, just to clarify for the record, the meeting that took place had one elected official, the threshold in notice a meeting is at least two or more. So there was no violation of Sunshine laws in that instance. Another thing for the public to be aware of, we take these things very seriously, but we also take very seriously the liability of the city. If we overstep our bounds and we get involved in matters that we do not have the legal authority to be involved in, it can be taking issues, it can be section 94 issues that we're dealing with due to private property rights and we don't have due process in place. So from a legal perspective, the city looked at all of the options that we could legally enforce and looked at what that might entail. And rather than take drastic, particular options, we decided to work directly with the private property owner and see what, if anything, could be done to remedy the situation without the city overstepping our bounds or our authority. Due process is there for everyone regardless of whether, what the issue is.
Thank you, Jase. Brooke Smith.
Good evening. I just wanted to point out to council and staff, I started last week trying to get city council agenda and meeting packets off of the website. I went all through last week. I went through all Monday morning of this week. Finally ended up coming in to City Hall thinking, well, maybe it's posted on the front door. Nope. Maybe it's at the front desk. Nope. And so the young lady at the front desk had to go upstairs and get me a copy of the agenda. Didn't get a packet, but at least I got the agenda. I don't understand that the agenda for Planning Commission, which is tomorrow night, and the packet was fully on the website, but not city council. So I would appreciate it if that would get up in a normal manner. Thanks.
Sit tight one second, Brooke, because I want to find out also before you go anywhere. Suzanne?
All I can say, Mayor Levy, as council is aware, we sent council the agenda on Friday saying the following information would follow. It was the ordinance and things that were in the packet on Monday, which Jason referred to him now. And on Monday, we sent that out, but I have to defer to Chris to ask why it wasn't posted on the website. I don't know.
But general practice, the agenda is, and the packet is on the website every meeting. Is this the first time you looked for it and didn't see it, Brooke?
Well, last week.
Last week, but prior to the last week, you looked at it and it's been there. It just wasn't there last week. I just want to make sure we're doing it right.
Well, this, this was the first one I looked for, but I mean, it wasn't there.
Okay, great. We'll make sure that gets corrected. Thank you very much.
This one exception.
I think so. Okay, Kim Urban. If you give us your name and address before you start, please.
Sorry, I'm not that tall. My name is Kim Urban. I've been a resident of Woodland Park for 23 years. Gentlemen, thank you for your service. I'm the mother of a 25 Bravo. The 15 months he spent in Afghanistan was the longest of my life and I'm sure his, so thank you. I appreciate it. I live at 1250 Woodland Valley Ranch Drive. I also purchased today a home at 505 Dallas Alley that I am excited about. Downsizing is in our future. I have two areas of concern that I would like your help on. The first one does go to Woodland Village and I appreciate the update and that we've made progress. My concern is how do we avoid this in the future? So I know our society is changing very quickly and a lot of times city codes and laws don't keep up with it. So learning from this experience, what are we going to do going forward to make sure that we don't put our citizens and some of our most at-risk citizens in this position in the future? So do we need to mandate that there are point-of-use meters for each lot? You know, throwing out suggestions there. So it's great that the problem is remedied, but I'm also a person, as a retired engineer, that I want to make sure that we don't have this problem again in the future. And how do we change the codes and expect things of business owners so that all sides are protected? Because I agree, Mr. Myers, everyone has due process, but when we have folks that feel that they're constantly trampled on, then maybe we need to look at how we can, how we can better that. There's also health concerns for the wider community in that it's not just the water, but also the state of some of the units in this village. And so I did speak to code enforcement this week and asked some questions about, you know, some of the units are very old, so you have asbestos, you have possibly lead, things along those lines. I was told that there is a nuisance code that is being written, that we didn't have one before. So I'm curious to know what the timeline is for that to be completed. The other thing, and this is informational for citizens and the, and the council as well, I spent most of the day, my kitchen's really clean, I have a headset, because I spent most of the day on the phone. I spoke to code enforcement, I spoke to the State of Colorado Public Utilities Commission, I spoke to Doug Sandburn's office. They were great, they were very helpful. They suggested that I call Teller County Commissioner. I called, I was instructed to send an email, I did. I still have not gotten a reply there. I also was told to reach out to the environmental health and safety for the state. I did not get to that. So I am very committed to making sure that we wrap our hands around this and it's not just the Band-Aid for this instance, but we make progress going forward. The second thing that I would like to address that's not on the agenda, this again goes, goes to the changes in our society and how we need to work proactively to update our codes and our city charters. And this has to do with the changes in how people live. So RV parks, tiny homes, things along that line. We're behind the curve in that we have these proposals to have these businesses come into our community, but we haven't set basic guidelines on what we expect so that we're protecting all of our citizens as we have these changes in society. So my question is, do we have city codes that deal with not a mobile home park, but a tiny home park? If we don't, are we working to get those created? And what do we think that timeline will be?
Great. Thank you very much for your questions. We'll answer both of those for you.
So I'll answer your first question and I have Jason answer your second question. The first question, or first statement you made is what, what actions are being taken to prevent this in the future? I will tell you, having spoken to the property owner, that the recommendation that you had about placing meters at each location is the action that the property owner intends to take based on the, the conversation that we've had with the property owner. So that, that should resolve, should, should address the issue. Kip, if you want to add to that.
Yeah, I'll just add to that. Very good question and believe it or not, we have already had those discussions. We're being proactive. We've recognized some of these situations. And you know, when these, when these areas of, when these properties were developed, we didn't have those, those things in place. And for example, new infrastructure, if it's a mobile home park, this, you know, you need fire protection, you need city mains, you need those type of things. So it would be a different scenario in this day and age if a mobile home park were to come in. So-
Yes, and Jason can touch on that a little more too, in terms of second question.
So to your, to your question about, yes, we are working on nuisance ordinance, it's asked with any time that we touch property rights and people, it's a very touchy subject. We'll make sure we're doing it in a conscious, conscious, purposeful way so that we're not overreaching, we're not underreaching. Because not everybody has the same opinion as to what a nuisance is. But that is something that we are working on with staff to develop. Also to your point of whether or not we're looking at other uses, these are the issues that Planning Commission has asked staff to start looking into, so we're looking for these issues. In regards to what regulations might be a little bit forward taking. You have to understand, generally speaking, the concept of law is a developer or anybody here in the room who owns private property has a right to their property, the way the code is today, if they come into an application. You cannot change the law and of course, they have vested property rights in what the law currently is when you start a project. So that's how we have to handle these things to that extent. To the extent that the community wants to see different standards, we're working on those. We'll have public hearings, we'll have public hearings as to what that standard is. However, we practice that, but there also is private property rights and grandfather uses and things in your home. If you own a home like myself, for example, and I use my home in Fort Morgan because I'm still trying to move here. I'm built 1965. If when the electrical code came out in 2015 there in Fort Morgan, I was required to tear apart my entire home, to replace literally everything, to bring it up to code, that would be an extreme burden. So generally speaking, you're allowed to keep a use until you get into your project remodeling. I don't know the specifics of mobile home park. I can't speak to that. But to the point where there's a unit already there pre-existing, we have limited authority under the law as to require retroactive, retroactive actions. As Kip brought up, a new mobile home park, all of the standards are completely different. You can't necessarily compare those two issues. We are cognizant of the problems and trying to be proactive and also respect people's property rights as we go forward. To the extent of what can be done in the future to prevent a particular issue, you have to keep in mind, we as a provider of water are responsible for the infrastructure up to the meter, up to where we turn over the water to the property owner. Anybody else in this room, if you own a home, you can have a leak in your property and just be cognizant, you don't necessarily want the government coming in onto your private property, tearing up your infrastructure without your ability to protect yourself. So this is a private property issue. The way the park was designed, I don't know how many years ago, that's the way it was, that's the parameters we have to work with it.
Thanks, Jase.
Yeah, I'll just touch, this is a great opportunity to promote the comprehensive planning, plan review in 2020. These are issues that, that every one of you can- Um, these are issues that, that every one of you, uh, can participate and, and add a voice, uh, to the review in 2020. So I'd encourage everyone here who has these concerns or has recommendations to absolutely be participating in, in the 2020 review for our comprehensive plan. I don't know if anybody else wants to add to that, uh, but it, that will be one of the critical points for our community in terms of upgrading or updating, uh, these specific types of, uh, zoning codes and ordinances.
Great. Thanks, Darren. Sir?
So I appreciate the community's, uh, effort to take care of this mobile park. Uh, we did see it on Facebook, um, we were updated constantly, I think we were updated Sunday even, with information. So it's not like we didn't know what was going on, but we knew there was, our city was taking care of it. It's an interesting thing, 'cause about five years ago, uh, another RV park up here had a similar issue, where they were just using water, their, their water bill was off the chart. And so they spent thousands and thousands of dollars to dig up the whole park and couldn't find a leak. They finally found the problem, and you're not going to believe what it was. One of the tenants kept their, um, bathtub running all the time because she, her cats liked it. So it sounds similar to what's happening here at this RV park, where there's a couple tenants that are just keeping running, the water running constantly. And so it makes it look like there's, uh, a leak, but there really isn't. So really, until we have all the information, you know, let's not, let's not get the pitchforks out and the, and the torches and, and march down the streets. Let's get all the information, and then let's, let's deal with it once we have all the information.
Thanks, Noel.
So, thank you.
Okay, move on. Larry Long?
I'm here with, uh, Bruce...
Excuse me if you give us...
Larry Long, 800 Northwoods Drive, West.
Thank you, sir.
Um, I'm mule deer, is the issue, so I'll defer until we're ready for that.
I appreciate it. Uh, I think it says Bruce Ashley?
I'm Bruce Ashley, uh, 65 Cornell Drive, and I'm here about to be mule deer.
Okay, we'll...
Appreciate you all.
Thank you very much. You don't have to come up, if you're just speaking in terms of mule deer, just let me know and, and guarantee we'll get back to you. Sue Roberts?
I'm Sue Roberts from, uh, 1230 West Bowman. We are new residents to Woodland Park, we've been here only a year. Um, what I'm wondering about, and I hope you can shed some light on for me, is, um, the zoning change issue on West Bowman. Uh, there's a business that used to be CDOT, is what my understanding is, and they're planning, uh, to get larger, um, and that would mean more traffic, of course, on West Bowman. Um, there's a, there's a bus stop at about 25 feet from their opening, and my grandkids take that bus. So that is my concern, um, that, uh, the traffic in and out of it is, uh, under some kind of guidance.
And I want to catch you up, but I want to make sure, um, you're aware that this is supposed to serve the Planning Commission process. I don't know if this is, is it tomorrow night? So you want to make sure you bring your comments there, um, because ultimately where the process starts.
Okay.
And then from there, they'll develop the recommendation, council, county council here, we don't want to put the car before the horse.
Okay, so it hasn't gotten this far?
Correct.
Okay.
So we want to make sure that, I mean, sure that City Council isn't making decisions before they've heard the whole case, so I apologize for that.
Sure.
I want to make sure you're aware.
Okay.
Tomorrow at 7 o'clock in the, in the City Council.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Believe it or not, Ms. Roberts, we are the last ones to know.
(laughing).
That's the truth. John Schaefer?
(inaudible).
Okay, thank you, sir. Those are the only names I have that are signed up, but we're still, um, available to come and speak. If you'd like, public comment on items not on the agenda, there is nobody else, then we will move forward. Okay, and that's what we will do. We have no unfinished business tonight, and we move on to ordinances on initial posting, and Jason Myers?
All right, so council got draft of ordinance that was provided on Monday, if I understand it, um, based off of some of the discussions and direction that I received to draft ordinance. As council's also aware, we also received some information, typically on first reading, we just talk about it, push it through, and handle this all on the back end. However, in this particular instance, we did receive some additional information, um, from the DDA, I believe, um, that Monday at 1:30 or 5:00-ish, um, that was passed to City Council as a potential development at Woodland Station, so I wanted to make sure council's aware of what your options are this evening. You can either table this issue completely until that resolves itself, you can continue forward, um, the public hearing was originally scheduled for planned, we planned to have that in August, give you time for Planning Commission comments, um, but you could push that August deadline out further if you'd like, um, you could continue as is, or, as I said, pull the issue all together, so that's kind of what, up to council and have some of that discussion, so the staff's aware of what your expectations are, I guess.
Jason, the only thing I was confused about is, should it have gone through the commission's process before we even saw it on first posting?
The code isn't clear as far as exactly what's required, it just says that Planning Commission needs 30 days before an ordinance can become effective through City Council and even a chance to review it. So that's why it was set out until August, so that we can start the discussion process. Planning Commission would have two meetings, um, in that timeframe to provide very quick feedback before the public hearing even happens. So the way the code reads, 30 days before the public hearing.
Well, knowing that, I, I would move to, um, approve it on first reading, uh, for public hearing at a later date, at, at the specified date in the, the motion.
Hold on a second. Is that a motion, Carol?
Yes, that's a motion.
A motion in a second. Um, council, any discussion?
I have, I just thought that it was a little premature. I agree with it, I don't disagree with it, but I thought it was a little premature because I feel like we're going to discuss this tonight, and I know that it's a part of the amendment.
Oh, different.
Okay, so it's a part of the amendments that we haven't fully gone through yet, so...
So, the, because it's related to the DDA issue generally, Woodland Station, this particular issue, whether or not to remove the review committee, isn't a part of the proposed amendments around the table from the DDA?
Okay.
It certainly could be.
In my head, I'm sorry, in my head, I'm connecting it because I'm, I, I don't want to loosen the rules without taking away the no cash consideration, and that's just how, that's my opinion. I don't feel like they should, whoever a developer would be that would come along, would be able to do what they want and also do no cash consideration. I think if they want to buy it, then they can have looser rules, but I think if they want to get it for no cash consideration, then there need to be rules that are abided by that are stricter than typical rules. So, I...
And as I understand it, Sally, correct me if I'm wrong, the way that this is intended and drafted is, um, to remove the DDA's concurrent review of the issue, not necessarily remove any of the standards per se. Right now, if a developer comes in, they submit their project to the DDA, um, and through a loose agreement, a handshake, City Council or the Bureau of City, planning staff reviews the same packet at the same time and applies the standards. This would just remove the duplicity and, and make it more of a streamlined process.
So it removes the city's ability to review?
No.
But, or it removes the DDA's ability?
Review committee.
The review committee?
Process, correct. The standards haven't changed just yet. And the other option, I guess, that council could say is, with this particular issue on the table that's been, and it's, we talked previously this evening about, if somebody comes to the development office in terms of an application, they have the right to have the law apply as it is today.
Right.
A letter of intent about a third party that might be interested isn't quite there yet, but certainly council could say, with this particular project that's on the table, regardless of the sort of, so they have the current process, if that's what you like to do.
Thanks.
And we'll have executive session tonight, and 30 days to get all the information we need before we make any decision on August 1st.
Okay. So if you'd like me to restate my motion? Is it necessary?
Um, I don't think I need you to, as long as council understands. Val?
Um, I agree with Hillary, I think it's a little early on this. Uh, I think we, I, I prefer to go through a process where we, where we address, uh, the amendments that have been presented for seven months now, and, uh, take them one at a time. We've got some, what I consider easy decisions in that process, and some harder ones that involve three attorneys. Um, and I've, I've stated this, uh, a couple times, but I believe that, um, this is problematic. Uh, I think it's early in the game, I think, I think I, we would be well served to start with some, uh, other issues, not putting waters with, that's my term, obviously, with, um, uh, this, this kind of, to me, is, is, uh, the tail end of things, I think we should do, is the, that's just my...
Any other opinions from council? Kelly?
I'm forward drawing the ordinance.
The motion on the table is simply to approve the first reading?
First reading.
For consideration, yeah, for a public hearing on the 1st of August.
We can, we can still hear public comment, um, but anybody else from council before we go to public comment?
All right. I would do that as enough, you know, as some work with the DDA, and this, uh, we're going to the wall right now, we're seeing mistakes. All needing to be bad, I still unclear there, the U.S.A. under thirty's, so, still, a lot of things on the table that we can do. I was kind of shocked to see this come up, because I still understood, initiation, we had so many meetings, an hour each, a two-hour one, but it seemed like we have so many people in the room that, you know, we really think we didn't even come to a consensus on it. So I see this a little, this, this little premature, and I think we still have a lot of things to do. I understand this is, I don't even know why this is a lot of things.
Well, I, I will remind the council that during one of our recent, uh, work sessions, we as a council did provide the guidance to the attorney to address this issue of review committee in an ordinance. There was a consensus by the council, it might have got lost in the, uh, the other discussion, but that is, he wouldn't have done this unless we'd asked him to. There was consensus by the council, and the reason that I recall is that we wanted to give a potential developer more flexibility by eliminating this unnecessary step. I don't know what will happen if, if there, the consensus here, in fact, I'm not even sure we can disapprove a first reading. I'd ask that question first of our attorney, and then secondly, uh, secondly, uh, will the, uh, Planning Commission still have the opportunity to review this ordinance, regardless of our decision? But Jason, could, could you advise us if, in fact, uh, an ordinance on first posting is a done deal?
No, you can certainly vote no on first reading.
We can?
No, it essentially kill the ordinance. If your direction is to continue to proceed to, to Plan Commission for their input, we certainly can. Um, if your, council's prerogative is not to see this anytime soon, I don't know, but I would put it to Planning Commission for input if that's not the intent.
But I, I do want to make it, to make it very clear, I mean, I'm, I'm, you know, getting a little long in the tooth, and my memory sometimes fails me, but I am certain at the work session, we advised the attorney to develop this ordinance, and that's why it's here.
I might say, we did advise him to move, uh, putting the ordinance out with this wording, and, uh...
We, we advised him to come up with the wording that would eliminate the review committee, and that's all this does.
I don't remember that, I'm sorry. I might be, I'm losing my memory too, so, I'm sorry, I don't really...
Kelly?
I just have to chime in with Carol, we did advise, and this is removing the overlay district, this was intended to provide for less bureaucracy and to rely on the city's code as it stands for development. It's been successful in many projects in the community, um, I'll cite Park State Bank, I'll cite the Wal-Mart, as far as the design review, and it being that mountain, uh, field that we see in those architectural developments. And this is simply to remove the overlay district and to rely on the city's code to make it less cumbersome and less onerous for a developer to propose and do something in the district.
Right.
And so that's what I remember. I remember it being given consensus to the city attorney to prepare this and bring it forward. It has absolutely nothing to do with the Second Amendment that we'll be discussing this evening, and so that's why it's before us and why I, I, I am in favor of, um, less bureaucracy and less oversight by Big Brother when it comes to a project.
There's Big Brother, right here. This is Big Brother.
Mm-hmm.
Those business people running the DDA, they understand the heart of the business, what is needed inside the...
I'm a business owner in this community as well, sir.
Yes, you are. You're in real estate.
I am.
Okay. Start selling goods inside the DDA, and, uh, start looking at some, uh, projects down there.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to call the question.
Thank you, Carol.
Question's been called.
(inaudible) for the record, we have the first, the first reading of ordinance number 1348 series, 2019, amending section 18.31 of the Woodland Park Municipal Code regarding the Woodland Station overlay district, and schedule a public hearing for August 1st, 2019. The motion is being made by Councilmember Harvey and seconded by Councilmember Case.
Point of order for Jason, uh, we have someone that's signed up to speak on this public comment, um, but the question has been called by a council member, how do we approach that?
Um, I think it's appropriate to handle the motion on the table, except with public comment before we do any new motions, if it, and as a, as a point of understanding, a lack of majority to pass this on first reading will ultimately be the decision of not moving forward on the ordinance.
Okay. That said, Suzanne?
Case?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
LeVar?
No.
LeVie?
Yes.
Swenier?
No.
Sawyer?
No.
Car?
No.
Thank you. Motion fails three-four.
So, my question then, Mr. Mayor, is it appropriate to forward this ordinance or this discussion to the Planning Commission?
That's a great question. I'd have to ask...
I think a motion would be appropriate on that issue, I don't know if you want to hear from the public comment. Certainly, you know, if, as I mentioned before, if council as a whole doesn't feel this is the appropriate direction to take, then it doesn't make sense to go back this through the Planning Commission for it. Doesn't make sense to spend that time, but if this is something council wants more information and input on, certainly that would be the route we would go, staff, whatever it is council wants to do. Um, and to your point earlier, we've got potential public signed up to comment on this, I don't know if you want to hear that at this point. Certainly it's not on the agenda of require public, uh, input, but certainly that's been a practice.
Council, do you want this to go to planning so they can further review it? Noel?
Uh, I'm not against making changes, I just think we're, we're doing this too quickly. We don't, I would love all of us to vote 7-0 on something, and then we all can move forward together. But as you can see based on that vote right there, is that we still, um, don't feel comfortable making these changes yet for the DDA.
Or if you do.
So answer my question then, do you feel like this is a good time to go to planning to get more information?
This ordinance? No.
Well, if I may.
Sure.
This is a land use issue... This is a land use issue and I think that it is appropriate for the planning commission to review it and then make recommendations to us.
And then you can make a decision after that.
I still think we need to dial it in a little bit more. I have the overlay district right here. I can read it. It is a page. It's not even a page because signage is two pages. So, literally it is right here. I could read it to the, to the audience and they would...
You don't need to read it.
Okay, well, my point is, is that it's, when I read it, I see that the city and the DDA work together very efficiently. I mean, a lot of it has references to the city code here. So, I, I'm confused how removing the overlay district is really going to help a developer.
And just to clarify, it's not removal of the district, it's removal of the DDA's committee for applying district standards.
Okay, well, then apparently nobody read this because it says right here, flexibility may be allowed with respect to scale, mass, architecture design and overall site design. We have a woodland hardware there that was, I mean, they let all the requirements go and, and they built that building there. So, I'm still unclear how removing this is going to help a developer because if a developer comes in with a great idea, everybody's on board and it, it doesn't fit exactly the design that is required, I'm pretty sure the DDA is going to allow it. So, I asked that question. How is this?
My question though again is, should we refer it to the planning commission for review or not?
I mean, it's not going to hurt.
Okay, if that's the case, let's give it to the planning commission.
It's not going to hurt. I mean, let's, let's throw more chiefs in here.
I disagree. This is, this is not language we want. We want to put a better piece of information through the planning commission. I agree, but this is not the thing we should put through. We've got some ideas we can kick around later.
We?
We, the council.
Okay.
Yeah, the council. And I, I would like to not waste the planning commission's time on this particular thing. I think we can put a better product...
We waste, we waste staff's time.
Anything else, counsel? If we want to bring this to planning, do we need a motion, Jason?
Yeah, so for my sake, understanding what it is of counsel, what you're expecting, whether or not to move this forward as is or whether to wait until some other day, I'm certain for counsel to give me directions or what is...
I'm going to chime back in. The ordinance we just voted down, we're going to try to keep alive by sending to planning. Is that my understanding?
So that we can get more information?
It's a starting point for the planning commission to work from. It could come back looking very different, working through the planning commission.
How many people do we want involved in this?
Well, I don't know. I guess...
It's going to go through planning regardless.
Right.
Well, I realize this, but I, I think we can dial this in a little better, that's all. I, I, it's a great start and I, and I think Jason did a great job. Uh, I think it still needs to be dialed in just a little bit. It's a good start.
And what a better place for maybe that to occur than the planning commission. What are your thoughts on that?
Well, if, if, if planning's okay with it, then I'm okay with it. I mean, sure, I, I don't mind other ideas. I'm open for new ideas. I'm open for other, other opinions. At the end of the day, we have to make the decision and the DDA has to live with it.
But what you're asking for Noel, I think we can get if we give it to planning so we get more information, we can dial it down a little bit better. We still don't have to make any decision, but we can get the more information that you're looking for if we get it to planning. I don't see any downside in that, do you?
And ultimately, it's the community that lives with it. In the long run, the, the life of the DDA is, has a limit. It's not into perpetuity however our community is. So, we need to also consider them, correct?
Your voice gets sweeter when you want to appreciate to do something.
Oh, no, I'm not trying to be, I'm not trying to be sweet or, or anything else. I'm just trying, I'm just thinking through the conversation.
I'll, I'll go back to my original. It doesn't hurt for planning to look at it.
Do we have a motion to bring this to planning?
You may, lady?
No, you may not.
Actually, sir...
Young lady?
I'm part of the potential community and...
Young lady, I'm going to ask you to please be quiet.
Motion to, um, allow the planning commission to review the ordinance as written and bring their recommendations back to the council.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to bring it to planning commission. Suzanne?
Harvey?
Yes.
Levar?
No.
Beatty?
Yes.
Swenier?
No.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Carr?
No.
Case?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries four-three.
Okay, thank you very much, counsel. Thank you. We will move on to public hearings, which we have none and no new business tonight. So, we'll move on to mayor's reports. I've got a number of events to mention, starting this Friday and every Friday from now till Labor Day, eight o'clock to one o'clock, the Woodland Park Farmers Market in Memorial Park. Friday, June twenty-eighth through June thirtieth. This coming weekend is the Yute Trail Stampede Rodeo at the Yute Pass Saddle Club Arena. Mary Jo's here. Times on that?
Uh, Friday night. Friday night?
Go, go ahead and come on out, Mary Jo, so we get this right. Take your time.
Mary Jo Larson, two hundred West Midland Avenue. This is our sixty-third Yute Trail Stampede Rodeo. Friday night is a jackpot bull ride and the mutton bustin' starts at seven o'clock. Gates open at five. We have food trucks, vendors, um, all kinds of action, kitty corral, all kinds of things. Performance on Saturday and Sunday are both two o'clock. Gates open at noon and we'll have two hours of just events and activities that the kids can do and play with and it should be a really good rodeo. We got a hundred and ten contestants entered. We've got some, um, uh, really good cowboys coming. We've got good stock. We're going to clown around with the bulls after each bull ride, so it should be fun.
Thank you very much.
Invite everyone to come.
Great weather too, looks like.
They said. Who are the clowns?
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry.
They're the rodeo clowns and I don't know. Yeah, they're rodeo clowns and they...
Turn on locals.
Yeah.
They're the best part.
Okay, Thursday, July fourth, um, old-fashioned Fourth of July at Memorial Park starts at nine o'clock to three. There are all kinds of events going on there. Um, it's one of the great things that we do in our community. So, I recommend it to everybody, for families, for your friends from outside of Woodland Park. The old-fashioned Fourth of July celebration is, is wonderful. I know American Legion VFW, correct, is going to have, going to have food.
Donations, food and raffle. Glory.
All kinds of stuff.
Yes.
It's a great day. Then the day after, maybe the best thing that we do in our community and that's the Symphony Above the Clouds at the Woodland Park Middle School. It'll be from five-thirty to ten. Thirty-ninth Annual, Kelly, you want to speak to this a little bit?
Sure. The gates actually open at five, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
And the music starts at five-thirty. Our opening act is Carrie Dell Trio. That'll be fun. And the weather's going to be perfect this year, unlike last year. Um, we've arranged for that, I hope. And then we have the symphony playing at seven. Bring your lawn chairs, bring your picnic, bring your family and bring a coat and blanket because it gets cold after the sun goes down. We'll have fireworks as long as the weather holds out. I think we have a week before they make the determination if we're going to still have fireworks. The cannons will be here from Fort Carson and it's an awesome event. So, we hope everyone comes out. And, um, a little plug, we have, uh, one of two commemorative quilts that were made of our historical T-shirts that have been in place for the last thirty-nine years. And we have two quilts that were made by Mary Ann Sperry, a local in our community. We're selling raffle tickets, five dollars each, three for ten dollars. We'll be selling them at our booth where our wonderful T-shirts are. And we have zip-up sweatshirts with no hoodie available this year too, in case you get cold. Um, so we'll have tickets available until the intermission before the symphony plays when we will make our drawing and award that first commemorative quilt. They're very pretty. You can see it at my office, Keller Williams. And that Farmer's Market on Friday, we'll be there selling. Ellen will be there with a group of guild members selling tickets and our wares for the event. So, be sure and come out. It's always a great time in our community.
Thanks, Kelly. Last event for me, July sixteenth, five-thirty to seven, Chamber Business Hours, uh, excuse me, Chamber Business After Hours. It's at the Anderson Building. That's July sixteenth at five-thirty. That's all I have. Val?
I want to also repeat that Yute Trail Stampede Rodeo, I'm heavily involved with it and, uh, we have advanced tickets on sale at a pretty good discount. That's YuteTrailStampedeRodeo.com. There's no spaces between any of those things. And on our Facebook page, you can find a link to those advanced tickets also. And, uh, kids, five under are free. We've got first responder discounts for... We've got a lot of things going on, like...
Water station.
Liquor refreshments and things like that. And like a hundred percent volunteers this year. We've got several food trucks that are going to be there and, uh, you'll find some of the food trucks you see around town are going to be there selling their wares too. So, I appreciate that. Secondly, keep Woodland Park beautiful. I wear a bunch of hats here, City Council, well, a lot of hats. The ones I'm interested in are, we had a wonderful cleanup here recently and, uh, I wore City Council, Keep Woodland Park Beautiful and Main Street hats and we, uh, we had a great cleanup and we're, we're planning to do more. Sally Riley helped us with planning, Ms. Riley, I'm sorry. She, uh, is Riley, um, helped us with coordinating things with the city. City did a great job supporting us and we're planning to do more of those because lots of volunteers out there and they're very successful. So, look to volunteer because some of us old people need younger help.
Thank you, Kelly.
Um, I already reported on what I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Carol.
Nothing, Your Honor. Kelly took mine, so...
Paul?
Yes, loving old fashioned Fourth of July and celebrating the United States of America. It's supposed to be a celebration. Come on over, the American Legion is going to be out here opening hot dogs, pots, uh, food times, donations are accepted. We'll show you, you'll want to see, you'll get to see some of us old, Paul. We appreciate the volunteers' participation in coming here for the celebration. Thank you for your service. Thank you. I'll open it back to Washington DC and the United States, Tommy. I can tell them what a nice community we have out here and my golly, we give it back. But I too want to, uh, thank all our citizens, our volunteers, our citizens who are here at Fourth of July, helping the city here and throughout the whole week. We have a great, great community here and, uh, fun time. Come on out, enjoy it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Paul. Noel?
Thank you, Paul. Uh, I, I'm going to end with that because that was great, so, thank you, Paul.
Okay, terrific. Thank you. Uh, we will move on. The city attorney's report?
No.
Thank you. Darren?
So, I'll start with a couple of recognitions. I want to recognize the July fourth event as the Best of Teller Award for the second straight year. And we've already talked about it a couple of times, so I just want to make sure everyone knows that it, that it won the award. I also want to congratulate council member Kelly Case for being selected as the best, best Realtor for Best of Teller Awards as well.
Thank you, Darren.
Um, and lastly, I'd like to, before I move to a couple, a couple of items, I'd like to appreciate city council. I want to, I want to congratulate our new, our new city attorney, Jason Myers, for completing the Cobalt Program or the Colorado Bar Association Leadership Training this year. Recently, the Cobalt is an interactive leadership training, if anyone mind to read this. Program designed specifically for lawyers with demonstrated leadership skills and commitment to the legal community. Not only are class members taught leadership skills, they also learn how to address challenges faced by leaders in the legal community and general community. The program's goals include nurturing effective leadership with respect to ethical, professional and community service issues, building relationships among legal leaders from across the state and from across experience levels, and raising the level of awareness among lawyers regarding the broad range of issues facing the legal profession. The program takes place over six months and includes about eight and a half days of programming. So, Jason started this before he came to, to Woodland Park. Each class then performs a service project. This year, um, the service project was in a partnership with Alamosa, Colorado with regards to local Boys and Girls Club to help approximately a hundred twenty-five K through twelve students prepare their Independence Day float and also have learning station, stations covering how to become a lawyer. Not that many people want to do that. The Constitution, know your rights and anti-bullying. So, I want to, um, the program is in its thirteenth year and from, uh, apparently it has impacted over four hundred plus attorneys in the state of Colorado. Uh, and each year, twenty participants are selected across the state and Jason was one of those twenty selectees this year. So, I just want to congratulate Jason on, on his completion of the program. I also have handed out a couple of things to you, but first, uh, if you go to our website, we now have our annual report, two thousand annual report has been published. It is on our website, uh, to those who go on our website. Uh, it's on the front page there and this covers all of this year's or last year's statistics for our services and our budget, ways to contact us. I can't, I, I will tell you, I do take it, uh, I do take personally or I take it, um, to heart that, uh, some individuals, there was a lot of phone calls this week regards to the mobile on park, a lot of talk. And so, I apologize if we could not get back to every one of you. Uh, we published a lot of the information online in a way that we could reach more people. It was not my intent to not give you a call back. My intent's always to communicate as effectively as we can on this issue because we know it was an important issue this week. So, I, I just want to offer a public apology if I could not get back to you or one of our staff could not get back to you because that was not the intent. And, uh, so if you want to, you can get on and, and see our, our annual report. Our contact information for all our staff is in the last page of the annual report. So, you, where you can contact individual departments. Uh, secondly, I'd like, I have, I have given city council the draft budget schedule for two thousand nineteen for the twenty-twenty budget. Nothing really to review there other than if you have recommended changes for that, please get back to us as soon as possible. The city staff is beginning budget deliberations. We've already discussed, um, much of the budget priorities for the year. I know there's going to be more, but the majority of the budget deliberations or priorities have been discussed in strategic planning so far and we'll talk more about that in, in, uh, at the beginning of the work session that's coming up, uh, in terms of, uh, you've received the first draft of the strategic plan and, uh, Cheryl Trent, our consultant, has asked for responses from city council by, by the end of the day on Friday, if you can get. And this will be one of three responses. We have, we have more time to respond and, and provide feedback on the, on the, on the strategic plan, so, but please, if you can, if you have time, please respond by Friday, by noon, yes. And then, uh, lastly, uh, you have some, some work that I've given, that staff has worked on in terms of the strategic plan that I will, I'll discuss at the beginning of the work session. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Um, anybody else staff-wise here? Nothing tonight? Okay, sounds good. Um, we have nothing else on the agenda tonight, so here's how we're going to proceed. Um, we're going to adjourn this meeting and then we're going to have a work session. Anybody that wants to comment, um, relative to... Okay, we'll go right to the work session, um, and it'll be relative to the deer population. So, we'll have that discussion and then last for a motion to go to executive session. Okay, so those that want to speak relative to the deer population, this will be your time. Uh, I know a lot of you have signed up, um, but if you'll raise your hand because there might be some that did not sign up and I'll just try to quickly go that direction. Claudia, would you like to start for us? Um, and you can come forward. And you can come forward. Give us your name and address, and then I will ask to keep these comments to somewhere between two and three minutes. That's how much I'm going to allow you, two to three minutes.
I'm Claudia Miller. I live at 810 Majestic Parkway, and I brought a few little folders for you guys that I didn't have last night. You know, last night I was here for the discussion, and just a clarification on a couple of points. It was brought up that the animals that are shot with PZP, if you did that, might not be... You wouldn't be able to eat that meat, but that isn't accurate. It's a molecule protein, and they can. Another thing that is... My big point last night was I think our community deserves to do a comprehensive plan that's non-biased, dealing with a variety of problems and perspectives on this deer issue. And looking at the impact, even that not feeding has had this winter on these little... On the fawns and everything, I've noticed two deer that have had one fawn each so far. So maybe some of this is helping. Another thing is, I'd really like to see, if you're doing a comprehensive study, to have a biologist that is not from this area look at our animal herd because I've heard that it's very unhealthy. People were mentioning that last night. But I think we'd all feel better if there was one more out-of-the-area assessment, maybe from university on that. One thing that was mentioned on the call from Elizabeth that I thought was interesting is that they took out 15 deer. And really, to have it effective from all the studies I've done, you'd have to take out 70 to 90% of the deer.
That's not what they said. That was one year.
One year.
Went up to 25.
And then they went up to 25. But when you think about the numbers, did that really create a major effect when you have to have that, a big call, taking out that many? It just didn't seem like it was that significant, looking at the two communities and the end result. Another thing was, when you do a call, they were talking about pulling from archery clubs. Anyone that has been involved with these calls back east say that you need professionals to make it a clean kill. And when you're using different types of equipment coming from people that are not professional, that can be a real issue. So it didn't cost any money, but there was suffering with the animals. I didn't hear one mention last night about the suffering of the animals, you know? And that kind of was upsetting to me because I think it's a really complex problem, and we need to also consider the animals.
Ms. Miller, I'm going to give you another minute. But understand, I want everybody to understand, we started this conversation yesterday. Everything's not out on the table. We're just starting.
Right.
This is why we're doing this, to get all the information we can so we can make the right decision. We're not going to make a decision today, or tomorrow, or the next day, but we're offering the opportunity to everybody to come forward so we can receive that information. Don't make it sound like we're pushing in one direction or the other. There are a number of issues. There are a number of ways that they can be dealt with. And so there's probably going to be a combination at some point that we're going to look at. So just understand that, okay? I appreciate your input, but there are a number that have input...
Well, I think that's why I'm pushing for a comprehensive plan because my feel is that from what I've assessed going to the community meeting, and probably the people that are going to represent their points here, which I think are important, but I'm sort of feeling like we need to slow down and do the comprehensive plan approach. And I didn't hear that last night that that had been done, but I'm coming in kind of fresh to this. So if you have a comprehensive plan or developing one, then I think that would really appease a lot of the community.
Thank you. Let's hear from everybody else. Young lady?
My name is Terry Collins, and I live at 1319 Firestone Drive. And I was here last night, and I don't feel that the gentleman last night that told us about the program in Elizabeth really presented definitive facts that it was a successful program. So I would like to recommend that we get a volunteer citizen task force to implement an educational program, to be approved by City Council, obviously, to help educate the people on, you know, the impact on their decorative vegetation and deer and feeding, and also then a task force to investigate innovative and creative and traditional ways of discouraging deer from the roadways. Obviously, to be approved by the City Council and CDOT, I guess, would be necessary. So I would just like the opportunity to give the people of Woodland Park to try to, you know, educate the community and change the way that the deer impact us.
Thanks very much. I will say this, I think from our conversation with the people that were there, council members, that Citizens Task Force came to the top of the list, so...
That's awesome. Thank you.
Like, again, understand, we don't have the answers. You all have great input. We're trying to make the right decision.
Right, and that's why, I guess, I think if we get the opportunity to try to educate the people and try to do some resourceful ways of discouraging deer from the roadway, that it would be interesting to see how we can impact that.
Absolutely. Thank you, and thanks for your handout. Who else? Young man, if you'd like to come forward? Sorry, I don't know your name, but you're going to give it to us and your address, please.
Young man, thank you. Haven't been called that in a long time.
Are you not?
My name's Randy Matthews. I live at 50 Edlow Road. I'm here representing the Mule Deer Foundation here in Woodland Park. And I apologize for reading my notes. I didn't realize that our members were drawing straws before I came, and I drew this short straw, and so I got nominated to present our information this evening.
And did you know they spoke with us yesterday also?
Yes. So, and I apologize for not making yesterday's meeting. I had planned on doing that, and old age, I guess, is my excuse. But the Woodland Park Mule Deer Chapter, we're part of a national organization, the Mule Deer Foundation, and we have a local chapter here in Woodland Park. Who are we? The Mule Deer Foundation was founded in 1988, North America. It's a nonprofit organization in North America. The Woodland Park Chapter was started in 2014, and we currently have roughly 300 members. And they are represented throughout Teller Park and Southwest Douglas Counties. What do we do? We have held five fundraiser banquets in Woodland Park, each with between 150 and 200 people attendance. We raise funds for local habitat projects and mule deer conservation. Some of our accomplishments are the James Mark Jones Aspen Regeneration Project, piling sash that had been removed for prescribed burns, purchased a log ark for the Colorado Parks and Wildlife for use in habitat improvements and projects, funded a noxious weed spraying project with the U.S. Forest Service near Lake George, purchased a mule deer decoy for Colorado Parks and Wildlife to use in law enforcement. We funded a Pinion Juniper Regeneration Project with the U.S. Forest Service, the BLM, and Colorado Parks and Wildlife in Southern Teller County. And currently, we're working with Colorado Parks and Wildlife on an Aspen Regeneration Project, including prescribed burning in Park County.
Great. Could you summarize that and get us all a copy of it?
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
That would be great.
Yeah. I think Rose, who's our chapter chair, she can get that information to you.
That would be great.
We also are involved in education. We man booths at many of the local functions, including the Farmer's Market, fairs, festivals, public school events, Colorado Parks and Wildlife public events, Mueller State Park, and we educate the public on the consequences of feeding deer, mule deer, and deer management, how to minimize human-deer conflicts. We provide literature to these attendees. We send out information via social media on the consequences of feeding mule deer, mule deer management, and how to manage human-deer conflicts. Our goals and missions, the purpose of the Mule Deer Foundation is to ensure the conservation of mule deer, black-tailed deer, and their habitat. We are a conservation organization, so habitat is one of the key things we focus on. Our goals are to restore, improve, and protect mule deer habitat, including land and easement acquisitions resulting in self-sustaining, healthy, free-ranging deer populations; to encourage and support responsible wildlife management with government agencies, private organizations, and landowners; to promote public education and scientific research related to mule deer and wildlife management; to support and encourage responsible and ethical behavior and awareness of issues among those whose actions affect mule deer; to support and regulate hunting as a viable component of mule deer and black-tailed deer conservation; our stance on urban mule deer management; we support public education as a means to change human behavior that is detriment to mule deer populations locally; we support the sound biological wildlife management that is provided by the state expert wildlife biologists and wildlife managers; and we also support active mule deer population management in Woodland Park that includes public hunting. And we also support the Colorado Parks and Wildlife as their biologists and their managers have recommendations that they make, and we fully support the CPW and their recommendations.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Be sure that we all get that. You probably send it to Suzanne, and she'll get it to all of us. Thank you very much. Okay, who else? Yes, sir. I know you were signed up earlier. I should remember your name.
My name's Bruce Ashley. I'm at 65 Cornell Drive, and I'm also with the Mule Deer Foundation. And I don't have a lot to add to it. I just want to concur with Randy that the organization is here to help promote mule deer and the conservation of it, and highly recommend that we do allow the CPW to put together a safe hunt. I think that's a good way to manage it.
Thank you. Thanks for your time. Anybody else like to comment? Yes, sir, if you'd like to come forward?
I'm John Schaefer, 245 at Line I Drive. And I was at last year's meeting, and in reference to what the game warden that spoke to us about the deer population and with what they've done in Elizabeth and also in Buena Vista with regulated hunts, I thought was a very good idea. It's cost-effective on what they mentioned, and also it was brought up to City Council that they was going to work with DPW on coming up with some solutions if they was going to decide to do this. If it worked in Elizabeth and it's working in Buena Vista, I know it's going to take some time, but if it is working, then why don't we give it a try to try it out here? And as, you know, being with the Mule Deer Foundation and trying to have conservation with the wildlife in this area, I've been here in Woodland Park for 30 years. I've seen Woodland Park double. I've seen the wildlife increase in the time that I've been here in Woodland Park. And I worked for CDOT, plowing roads and picking the deer up off the highway that getting hit all the time. Do we really want to see more and more deer getting killed and more people having their vehicles totaled out or damaged? Or are people getting hurt in the transition of the accidents that are being... Taking place here in Woodland Park and Teller County? I think that we do need to do something about it. As the game warden said, that the deer population is going to constantly increase. This was their territory before we even came here, and a lot of them have stayed in the areas. Westwood Lakes, Woodland West, Edlow Road, the surrounding areas, there's deer that are there, and if they're having either twins or triplets every year, they're going to multiply pretty quick, and a lot of these little ones are going to get hit. A lot of them are... Another thing was mentioned, people feeding the deer. You know, that's another thing that we have to work on, on teaching people that these are... This is wildlife. We just don't go out and feed wildlife. The same with... No different than feeding bears. The same thing. So we need to work a little bit on the conservation, and I would like to see to where City Council can work with DPW on coming up with a solution. And I think a lot of people didn't understand last year when they was talking about it, to where the DPW was talking, regulated hunts. They don't understand the word regulated. If they are going to screen all the archery hunters, they know what they got out there to help reduce the population. And if the meat is going to the needy and it's going to a good cause, and they also talked about serial numbering the arrows that the hunter would use, and they have to contact the DPW, and they have to contact the landowner. Everything seemed to be in an organized manner to where if they work on a regulated hunt, I think that we can help control a lot of the deer population in Woodland Park and Teller County. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Schaefer. And I'm going to encourage you and others, and you'll be hearing the information, but I got a feeling we're going to have a Citizens Committee. So a task force, that those of you that have this kind of information, whether you want the deers to be killed by a hunt or not, we want to get those people together. And again, our goal is to make the right decision for the community.
Right.
Thank you very much for your input.
Thank you.
Anybody else before we end this discussion? Yes, sir?
Larry Long, 800 Northwoods Drive West. I'm not going to speak on behalf of the Mule Deer Foundation. I think Randy did a fine job. I've lived in Woodland Park for 14 years now, and I don't have any flowers or any shrubs or any young trees because the deer have destroyed them. I love deer. They're great. They taste great. I would push the council for a comprehensive plan that includes possibly hunting, education for sure, because there's a lot of people that just don't understand that they're killing the deer when they feed them. And maybe there's other things that the DOW would come up with. Very comprehensive to get the deer population down. I would like to know from the council what your timeline is and when you see this happening.
You know, if we could give you a timeline, we would. We just know that we are going to move forward as quickly as we can. And so we will try to make everything public, do the best we can to communicate at Facebook, everything else that we do. We can't give you a date right now. Wish we could, but we can't.
I believe it was 2017, it may have been 2016, that Officer Cronin had told us that there were, for that year, there was 125 vehicle deer collisions just in the city limits of Woodland Park. That's a lot of insurance money. That's a lot of out-of-pocket money for people. I know my deductible's 500. I think most people is either that or 1,000. So we have more deer now than we did two years ago. I mean, I could show you my front yard. It looks like a stockyard. So anyway, I would encourage the council to move forward with this and for the benefit of the city and for the benefit of the population of mule deer.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Yes, sir?
While he's coming forward, if we could remind listeners that a city ordinance was passed to address feeding in... ordinance was passed to address feeding, intentionally feeding wildlife, and that is in effect, that was part of, a, part of a beginning of a comprehensive plan. It goes above and beyond the state, state penalties for feeding wildlife, but we do now have an ordinance in place for punishing those that intentionally feed wildlife.
With a fee, I think, of three hundred dollars, is that correct?
It's a progressive fee.
And how many issues have we had since we instated that?
I can say that we have had seven reports, and we were able to handle all seven of those through education, and we were not in a position where we had to fine the people. So, it was a great tool, it was a great compliance tool, to help people understand that they have an option, they can either pay the fine, or stop eating the deer, and all seven decided to stop eating, which was great.
It's great, thank you. Yes, sir, if you give us your name and address before you start.
My name is Joe Crowell. I currently live outside of Lake George. I lived in Woodland Park for many years, I was a probation officer in this town in Teller County for twenty-four years. I have been a volunteer with Parks and Wildlife for thirty years. I travel all over the county, handling problem bear calls, and I can tell you that by far, Woodland Park has the most deer of any place in Teller County. One issue I'm concerned, that wasn't brought up here tonight, I've had the unfortunate bad luck of taking part, helping Officer Cronin twice, capture mountain lions in the city, that were eating people's pets, and living under people's porches. That is a, a very grave danger, not only the pets, but we're looking at human danger, and possibility of small adults or kids being attacked by mountain lions. Mountain lions feed on deer, the more deer we have, the more mountain lion problems we're gonna have. I would echo the sentiments of the Mule Deer Foundation people, and of the biologists from Parks and Wildlife. The population needs to be reduced, the most logical way is through a closely controlled hunt, and I believe our biologists and our wildlife officers can accomplish that.
Thank you very much. Okay, one last call. Okay, that said, again, we'll do the best we can to let everybody know what our next steps are gonna be, make it public, and again, we, we're not sure exactly where we're going in this regard, so, give us some time, but it's on the council's minds, and rest assured we are going to move forward. That said, all I need from council...
Do you have a minute to answer?
We do. You want to do it now?
Yes.
Okay.
It'll be quick. I just wanted to touch on the strategic plan piece. I, I, as you know, as I said earlier, Cheryl Trent sent an email to city council to remind city council to respond to the first response timeframe for the strategic plan, by noon on Friday. One of the things I wanted to touch on, from our previous deliberations, is the city staff has worked to deliberate on possibly amending our, well, we have worked on amending our core values, and I have those in front of city council, if you look at the sheet that's, the sheet right here, you'll see the, the core values there in front of you as well. And one of the things that we've also done is, we, we kept on reading and deliberating on the, on the mission statement, and the mission statement just didn't read, it wasn't succinct, and it seemed to be a little bit confusing. So, and I know that I've had certain comments, specific comments from council member Harvey on, on the word unwavering, but I really wanted to have something that the city staff, in terms of operationally, could, could really align the, the operations and services that we provide to, to our community. So, the recommendation I have is to amend it, make it more succinct, so that it's memorable, and that our staff can, can, and can use it to guide the decision-making in the way that they provide services to our community. What it says now is, "To protect, promote, enhance the general well-being of our mountain community through an unwavering commitment to excellence that strengthens public trust." And the, you can see the, the one above it is the one that we amended in the, the previous deliberation, and the one above that is the one that we started with. So, just feedback from city council on that, if you can, I'd like to push this forward to Cheryl, as, in the first iteration, so that it can be included, and we'll have multiple, two more times to, to make additional changes to the strategic plan. But from an operational perspective, I'd like to, I'd like to recommend this as our, as our mission statement, after having further amended it with our city, our city staff.
Thank you.
I will, just had it out here. The other thing I wanted to just go over is, is the, is the change in our, our core values. City staff is presenting, after deliberations, several deliberations on amending our, our core values. We're presenting this to you as well. Strive, service, trust, respect, integrity, vision, and excellence is, as our core values. An easier way to remember for our staff, and, and definitely aligns with the, the mission statement that we're proposing to city council and our community as well. So striving to achieve those, those core values in everything that we do.
I like anything that turns into an action.
Yes.
Is it because of your background?
And anything else you, anything else you've seen that you would like to see either changed or amended, so that we can come to a consensus on the final version, after two additional comment periods? Number three.
Number three.
We started with one. What's the, now, is this, yeah, this is the, it's a little shorter.
I like short. Short's good.
Okay.
Thank you.
So that, that's all I had to present right now, just to remind her to respond to Cheryl Trent by Friday at noon.
Council questions? I need a board to go to executive session.
I'll move to go into the executive session.
Mayor Levy, can you please state the reason you go into executive session?
I was hoping that he would pick up where I left off.
It's right on you. Thank you.
..............................................................................